Good evening, everyone. This meeting is called to order. I'm Mayor Beverly H. Burks, and this is the August 27th work session agenda. I'll start off with roll call. Vice Mayor Johnson.
Okay.
Councilwoman Bell.
President.
Councilwoman Hood.
President.
Councilman Perkins.
President.
And Councilman Carroll. I will recognize our interim city manager, Tammy Sattler Jones. At this time, we will do any updates or changes to the agenda.
Have an update?
Yes, sir.
I move that we remove item 4B, "Presentation by CHA Consulting Incorporated Regarding Potential Grant Opportunities."
Is there a second?
A second.
It has been properly moved and seconded to remove 4B, "Presentation by CHA Consulting, Inc., Regarding Potential Grant Opportunities." All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. We will then proceed with the agenda as displayed. We will go into public comments, where any member of the public may address questions or comments to the city council referencing only agenda items about the -- after the mayor and the council have had the opportunity to discuss the agenda item. Each attendee will be allowed three minutes for comments. We will start with 4A, which is the "Presentation Administrative Business," with the presentation of an investigator award from the Clarkston Police Department to Detective Greg Feldman. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and council and citizens. We would like to present an award, the City of Clarkston Police Department Investigator Award. I'm going to have Sergeant Trumble give a synopsis of this award.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I promise this will be short. On June 22nd, 2024, we responded to a kidnapping, hijacking a motor vehicle, armed robbery call in an apartment complex on Brockett Road. During this call, the victims described to us that they were in a brand-new car, sitting in the parking lot of the apartment complex, when an unidentified male got in the back, said, "Drive or I'll kill you," made them drive to an ATM, where he tried to take money out of one of the victim's accounts. He then had them drive somewhere else, forced them at gunpoint out of the car, and fled in their car. As you can imagine, there's not a whole lot to go on, given what I've just described to you, but I want to briefly explain what Detective Feldman did that ultimately resulted in an arrest, where quite often there wouldn't have been in this kind of case. He figured out which ATM was accessed. We got a really good picture from that ATM. We utilized our flock cameras in the city that you all know we have. He contacted the dealership where our victim purchased their car, still had the dealer tag on it. He was able to figure out that the GPS system had not been turned on, but it could be, with the aid of the victim. He contacted the victim, worked with the victim, activated the GPS. Detective Feldman found the car in Atlanta. He went with Atlanta police out there, seized the car, processed it for fingerprints and DNA. And we then proceeded on with using the photos we got from the bank, and we got a photo that -- it's a fine photo, but it doesn't tell us who he is. But the photo was a young man that had some sort of a distinctive tattoo on his hand. We utilized facial recognition, Detective Feldman did, and when we developed a suspect, ran a criminal history on that suspect, found that he had very recently been arrested in another county and was still in custody there. Detective Feldman drove to South Georgia, executed a search warrant in South Georgia. He had the same distinctive tattoo on his hand. He interviewed him, and then he ultimately obtained warrants for this man. And this is not a local young man. This is a stranger to our town that came in and perpetrated this crime on our people. So we charged that man with multiple counts, and those are all waiting for him when he gets finished down in the county he's in. But this is a very good case. This is a very good outcome for this case, and I just wanted to applaud Detective Feldman for doing that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate the hard work that you've done. We're going to come down and take a photo with you, if it's okay. Okay, thank you. All right. We are grateful to our wonderful police department again. Thank you for going beyond the call of duty and doing great work. So thank you, Chief, Assistant Chief, for continuing to lead a great team. We'll move on to item 4C, so anybody who walked in. We removed item 4B. 4C is "Presentation by Davenport and Company, LLC, on the SPOS Plan of Finance for the 2024 Series Bond Issued Against Future SPOS II Revenues," and interim city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I'm going to turn it over to our finance director, Dan Deffnall, who will introduce our staff from Davenport and Company. Thank you.
Yes, we have Ricardo Cornejo and Doug Gephardt back with us from Davenport to present our plan of finance for this financing.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and citizens. As Dan said, my name is Ricardo Cornejo. My colleague is Doug Gephardt. What we would like to do today is go through the SPOS Plan of Finance for the SPOS bonds that we are going to go through, okay? So background and overview, as you all know, November 7th, the citizens voted in favor of a continuation of the 1% local options tax. Following a successful referendum, city council declared the results of the election through a resolution adopted in February. Following that, bond and local council completed the validation process in the court system. May 24th, the city adopted an authorization resolution for city staff professionals, such as ourselves and legal counsel, to proceed with the issuance of the SPOS bond, with the exception of the plan of finance, which we are presenting today. As promised, the following will give you an information piece on the plan of finance. The electoral vote was for the issuance of the city of general obligation debt in an aggregate principal of about $12 million. The issuance will finance the cost of certain capital outlay programs and projects. City staff has requested a $6.5 million project fund, plus factoring in the cost of issuance and contingencies. Davenport has assumed a not-to-exceed $7 million borrowing of the $12 million authorization. One of the things that we did is because the city is limited to issuing the maximum principal amount in the following year set forth, starting in 2025, in an effort to preserve the ability for the city to possibly issue more of that $12 million debt, we recommend that we front-load it. And as you see, the debt is in those first four years for that debt. So that goes to $7 million, allows for the city to issue more debt if it would want to, of $5 million. If you turn the page, page three is just a synopsis of what we call the AAA five-year tax-exempt interest rates. This is what financial advisors like ourselves look at what possibly is out there currently. As you can see, our last numbers are in July 24th. The rate is below a 3% and has increased a little bit, but not by much. So the method of sale that we've discussed with the folks, with our staff, with the staff and ourselves, is that we believe that the bank loan is the appropriate way to move forward. And what that is, is that Davenport will issue a request for proposal to local banks, to regional and national banks, and this no way obligates the city to move forward, but if the rates come back in which the structure and the options are amenable to you all, then we will move forward. The repayment structure will be out there for the banks to look at and review. The city has the benefit of knowing the interest rates, the rates and terms, conditions, before deciding on whether or not to move forward. So the entire process can be completed and will be completed in the next 45 to 60 days. Cost of issuance can be paid, as we've stated before, from the proceeds of the transaction. So again, it also allows, in most cases, prepayment of the loan. So here are some of the key assumptions discussing with staff, with your finance director. It's a $7 million borrowing. Front-loaded principal, as you see in those first four years, amortization. We're doing a planning rate of about 450. Again, conservative, but we want to make sure that that's where we would land. Closing would be somewhere October 10th of 2024. Semi-annual interest payments, first annual principal payment would be July 1st of 2025, and again, including all cost of issuance. So actions, as you can see on the timetable, things that have been completed, city council approval, city council regular session, we've completed that and the validation. Today, we're presenting to you, my colleague and myself, to answer any questions, and then tomorrow, we will be distributing the request for proposal to the local, regional, and national banks. And we've spoken with staff on the individuals that here locally that should be receiving those RFPs. And then, as you can see, we'll communicate to the potential lenders, basically telling the story of the city. We'll receive responses, negotiate with the bidders, putting together, finalizing bond documents, again, working in tandem with city attorney and also with the bond council, then presenting, again, the results. September 24th, October 1st, city will approve the recommended bond resolutions from bond council, and then we should have a closing in October 10th. So with that, I'll stop. This is on the financing process, a lot of it is what we just discussed and what we went through. So with that, I'll stop. My colleague, Doug Gephardt, and I. Doug, do you have anything to add? We'll answer any questions that the mayor and city council may have.
Thank you for the presentation, and this is similar to what we had with SPOS I.
Correct.
So council, do you have any questions at this time? Oh, Councilwoman Hood?
Just wondering why we don't need to wait for the city council meeting on this to begin and just beginning this process after work session.
Because this is the presentation for them. They've been working on this. This is just kind of where we are in terms of the presentation.
And I think to answer that question is on the financing process. The way that the bids are structured is that they're only -- rates are only held for a certain period of time, and we need a certain amount of time to market the bonds. So in order to do that, we -- it was either not have the results for your next work session or wait for this and then not have it in the future. So we thought it'd be better to get permission, and then that way, we present the results and not just come to you only at the formal board meeting or council meeting.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bell.
Thank you. I just have a question about the key assumptions of the 4.5% planned interest rate when I look at the five-year projections. And I looked until July 24th at almost 2.5.
That is correct. But we, as financial advisors, always conservative with our planning rate. So therefore, we are hoping, obviously, for a rate that falls into that process. But again, that's just a planning rate.
Yeah, and that is a AAA benchmark yield curve, so the strongest possible rating. And so even there, there's spreads to that benchmark. So that's just a benchmark curve that folks use to price their bonds, and that's a public market issuance. We're recommending a bank loan based upon conversations with our staff. So we think 4.5 is slightly conservative, probably going to be in the low four, we would hope, just because of the way the spreads are structured, is that based upon credit, size of the issuance, things of that nature, you price based off that benchmark yield curve.
And then I have one more question. I just want to know your rationale behind the rate bank loan. Do you think that that'll just make it more competitive as it relates to the interest rate, or what's the rationale?
There's sort of two things. One is the desire to get this bond issued prior to the upcoming presidential election. There's not a lot of uncertainty surrounding that, and so if we were to go the public market route, it wouldn't be feasible at this point to get that completed prior to then, and you're taking a lot of interest rate risk if that does come into place. And then the second one, just with the amount of staff, time, and resources that it would take to facilitate a public market issuance, to complete that official statement, and knowing the workload that's on your current finance director, this methodology takes a lot of -- a lot of work off of the plate of that and presents a more streamlined approach.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. Thank you very much for the presentation. Anyone from the public signed up for this one?
No one signed up.
Okay, perfect, all right. So we'll move on to old business, which is to discuss a resolution committing matching funds in the event that the city is awarded the Atlanta United GA 100 Pitch Grant to fund the installation of lights at the Mylon Park soccer field in the amount of $100,000 to be funded out of SPOS II. Interim city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason why you see item 5A, 5B, and 5C on the agenda is because these items have already been formally approved by the council. However, it was recommended that we do a resolution to formalize where the matching funds will come from. So particularly for 5A, again, this agenda item was already approved, but we're doing a resolution to formally memorialize that the matching funds, up to $100,000, will be funded out of SPOS II if the city is awarded the Atlanta United Pitch Grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding this item? Hearing none. Do we have any from the public signed up for this one?
No one signed up from the public.
Okay, thank you, council. Can this be a consent? Consent? Okay, thank you, thank you. We'll move on to item 5B, which is to discuss a resolution committing matching funds to the proposed projects for the SPOS for 2023 and 2024, Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, L-MIG, funding in the amount of $61,332.95 to be funded out of SPOS II. And again, interim city manager.
Jones. No additional comments, Mayor. As I mentioned, this item was already approved, actually, back in January, if I'm not mistaken. And so we are basically identifying where the matching funds will come from. Okay, and with this one, are there any comments from the council?
Hearing none. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none. Can this also be consent?
Consent.
Consent, okay. We'll move next to item 5C, which is to discuss a resolution committing matching funds for the Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act, okay, IIJA, Safe Streets for All, SS4A, Transportation Planning Grant in the amount of $250,000 to be funded out of SPOS II. Interim city manager, Jones.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This particular agenda item, the city was awarded $1 million. We'd like to recognize that we got the largest award in the state of Georgia for the SS4A grant. Thank you. And so we are recommending that the resolution be approved for the matching funds in the amount of $250,000 to be funded out of SPOS II.
Okay, and with this, are there any questions? Hearing none. Are there any questions or comments from the public?
No one signed up for this item.
Okay, and this too. Can we consent? Consent, outstanding. We'll move on to item 5D, which is to discuss a resolution confirming the 2024 SPOS II resurfacing project list, and that's Mr. Kaiser.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. So the list of resurfacing projects under SPOS II was discussed at the council retreat and I believe at a work session as well. So before we actually began the advertisement of the projects that you see on that table that's included in your work session agenda package, there were three projects that requires a little bit more clarification and direction from council and mayor. In those three projects, you have a red dot next to them on the table. The first project, I may have them a bit out of order, but I'll just go through my memory. First one is Jamison Place. Jamison Place, again, was on the list presented to you. Come to find out, after a little bit more work, that half that road is in the county, half the road's in the city. So my suggestion would be, Mayor, as you were successful with Commissioner Bradshaw, maybe he can allocate some funds to that project so we can do the entire road. So that'd be one suggestion, and having an intergovernmental agreement with DeKalb County to make that happen. The second project is College Avenue. Over the last couple of years, well, let me back up. The reason that project is both on the resurfacing list and on potential speed table list was because, over the last couple of years, members of council have talked about slowing up cars on College Avenue. And so it only makes sense for us to delay the resurfacing on that road, because when we do that road for resurfacing, we'll have to raise the granite curb up, because folks have had problems with street runoff in front yards. So it's a holistic project that includes raising the granite curb up, like we did on Market and other streets in the city, then putting in speed tables, well, resurfacing and then putting in speed tables. And so it's better to try to do it as all one project, as opposed to coming in and resurfacing the road, then tearing out the curb, and putting in speed tables. And so I would suggest that we hold off on that project until council decision on where they want additional speed tables to go. And again, they can be speed humps, or they can be easeabouts, your choice, but it's just a matter of not doing the resurfacing now. So that's the second project. The third one is Mauk Street. So Mauk Street, over the last five, six, seven years, both Ms. Kwaye, as well as Lisa and I, have had a number of conversations with developers trying to develop on either side of Mauk Street. They bring in plans, they're turned down because they can't meet the city requirements. We must have had, from what I recall, at least four or five, or maybe even six, meetings with different developers trying to develop on both sides of Mauk Street. So one day, that's going to happen, and the developer will come in, and they'll be not so adamant about meeting certain density requirements from a profit standpoint, and they will build something that's more conducive to the city requirements. And that will happen soon, I believe, because as land becomes more valuable in the city, as less lands available for development, they'll go back to that site, and they'll say, "It's time for us to reduce our requirements from a density standpoint and do something the city will accept." When that happens, half of Mauk Street's going to be torn up, because they'll be putting in widened pavement section to 20 feet with sidewalks, curb and gutter on the section of property that they own on the frontages. When that happens, the streets are going to be torn up. So why spend X amount of money to resurface that street now when we know at some point in the future it's going to be torn up? There's not a significant amount of cost associated with it, but it is, we're saving $30,000, $40,000 by not resurfacing that road now and holding off until some point in the future. Plus, the development community very likely would be responsible for resurfacing portion of that road anyway. And plus, Mauk Street is not as bad as Pecan. It's not as bad as some other streets in the city. So it's usable without major problems for people traveling up and down the road. So those are the three projects that I would recommend we hold off on.
Okay, any questions from the council? And I guess, did we have one? I remember we had a resident that come in talking about his street needing to be, hadn't been paved in like 30-something years or 20-something years. Casa...
Don't remember.
Yeah, that was in the back. It was in the back.
Casa Way or Casa... Yeah, it's Casa Woods Lane.
Yeah.
But we looked at, as a mayor, we looked at all the city roads about two years ago and rated them. That's how I came up with that list, so.
Yeah.
Not that something -- it's very possible that some of these roads I did not recommend could be substituted for these, provided they are needed.
Okay, okay. I know he's -- I just, he's been in here several times and, you know, might be one we might want to look at. Just go back, see if we slip.
Is that Casa Woods subdivision area?
Yeah.
Okay, on the backside?
It was in the back.
Okay.
Yeah, it was in the very back.
All right, I'll look at it.
I'll get back with you on that. Are there any other comments on this one? Councilman Perkins?
Mr. Kaiser, so on the traffic calming on College Avenue, I've spoken to a couple residents there as well, and they complained about the runoff. When we're talking about traffic calming, I guess what's the, are we looking at this cycle of funding? Are we looking at pushing that till next year? Or what are you kind of thinking?
It's in SPOS II, the first round of funding.
Okay, that's what I thought. And then, in terms of traffic calming, are you only recommending we put in speed tables or put a larger...
Your discretion.
Your discretion, gotcha, okay.
They both work.
Gotcha.
And I guess, did we have one, I remember we had a resident to come in talking about his street needing to be, hadn't been paved in like 30 something years or 20 something years. Casa...
Don't remember.
Yeah, that was in the back, it was in the back.
Casa Way or Casa, yeah, it's Casa Woods Lane.
Yeah.
But we, we looked at, as a mayor, we looked at all the city roads about two years ago and rated them. That's how I came up with that list, so.
Yeah.
Not that something, it's very possible that some of these roads I did not recommend could be substituted for these provided they, they are needed.
Okay, okay. I know he's, I just, he's been in here several times and, you know, might be one we might want to look at, just go back and see if we slip.
Is that Casa Woods subdivision area?
Yeah.
Okay, on the backside?
It was in the back.
Okay.
Yeah, it was in the very back.
All right, I'll look at it.
I'll get back with you on that. Are there any other comments on this one? Councilman Perkins.
Mr. Kaiser, so on the traffic calming on College Avenue, I've spoken to a couple residents there as well, and they complained about the runoff. When we're talking about traffic calming, I guess what's the, are we looking at this cycle of funding? Are we looking at pushing that till next year or what are you kind of?
It's in SPOS II, the first round of funding.
Okay, that's what I thought. And then in terms of traffic calming, are you only recommending we put in speed tables or put a larger?
Your discretion.
Your discretion, gotcha, okay.
They both work.
Gotcha.
One's prettier than the other.
Counsel, oh, Council Vice Mayor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm looking at these three pieces of property that's not on this list, so you tell us.
I can't hear you.
Turn your mic on, I can't hear you.
Okay, sorry. Okay, these, the, the funding for these three projects are not on the list that we have in our packets tonight, is that correct?
No, there's a table in your package, the three red dots next to them. And that's the resurfacing list under SPOS II, the first round of funding.
Thank you. So you're saying that if Casa is as bad as the resident says it is, we could use funding from one of these three?
Mm-hmm.
And get, okay.
Or, or spread it to some other projects in the SPOS program, your choice.
Thank you.
Okay. And Councilwoman Bell?
Well, that was only my question, um, mayor. Should we go back to the list that you gave us initially and identify three other projects instead of waiting? Because we're not going to put the bid on till next fall for these, is that what you're recommending, right?
Oh, we're going out to bid this year.
Oh, okay, but these particular projects were identified and we could just find other substitutes?
Yeah, sure, yes.
So I guess it's up to us if we want to replace some of the other projects, that way we keep everything flowing and moving?
Or I can look at the ones that are, so remember, the, the roads on that list were rated one through five, one being the worst, five, 10 being the best. Over the last two years, some of those roads you mentioned could have come up to the five level, and I can take a look at that in the next couple of days and come back to council.
Yep, and Councilwoman Bell?
So if, if y'all okay with it, if y'all are fine with Larry providing recommendations for us before the next meeting, that way we can move on those and don't delay using this fund, if that's okay with y'all.
Yeah, no, I think that's what he's going to probably end up doing anyways, go back and look. So by council meeting, we'll have a list of potential projects that we can substitute for this.
Yes, ma'am.
And then for the Jamerson, what amount will we need on our side?
I'll let you know, it's on that list, there's a cost there, half of that.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you. Okay. Yes.
So for College Avenue, based on what you said, Mr. Kaiser, the only thing that you would need is recommendations for how we plan on moving forward with the common measures, right? So is it worthwhile as a council, I know it's a workday, so I'm just looking at y'all to ask y'all a question, is it worthwhile for us to do our due diligence and work with city staff, figure out if we should move forward on that or should we delay it? Because we got a lot of concerns on College Avenue, and that's why it wasn't initially on this list, right? And that flooding has still continued to happen over there in those people's yards. I think it's, I mean, if y'all deem it appropriate as a majority, worthwhile for us to move on, I don't think we should delay it if it's just the common measures for the milling.
So you're a type of traffic calming, as you know, speed tables as well as easebouts. If you go the speed table, I mean, if you go the speed table route, then we're not affecting any kind of curb that we're going to raise up. If we go the easabout route, then that's a totally different story. Everything that we raise now associated with the resurfacing work will be torn out.
So one of the points I want to also bring up with that particular street, that's a lot of, where we do a lot of filming on that street as well. So what impact would it have versus the tables versus the speed humps? Because I know, again, they do a lot of filming and when they have those crews and everything out, they're all out in the street, and that would be a concern in terms of, we want to make sure we have safety, we know that they continuously use that, so I just want to also make sure we think about that, too.
Speed tables are less intrusive.
Okay.
But again, if you're filming out there, I think a film, taking the film of a easabout with plants and brick pavers, a little bit prettier than a speed table, that's asphalt, just a thought.
Just wanted to bring those up. So which council, what would you like? Because if that's, if that's the only thing, and we wait on the Mauk, then we'll have the money for the speed table. So would you like to, which one is your preference, the speed?
Well, first of all, we need to see if they have the bandwidth to, to do more projects because we're pushing a lot to staff. This is not the only thing that we should do to them.
So you may, so if you look at the SPOS II, you see a category that talks about traffic calming. There are very likely other locations in the city other than College Avenue. And so you want to group, because it says not big. You want to group as many as you can together to get a better price, whatever do, easebouts or trap, or speed tables.
Okay. Councilwoman Bell?
So here's a suggestion that I will propose, and y'all let me know if y'all agree with that. And we get Mr. Kaiser to provide us with three additional recommendations that are already on the list to supplement those three that we're not moving on. Because I hear Vice Mayor Johnson mentioned about staff capacity, they may not have enough time to turn around, but at least we'll have options we can substitute, and that gives staff more time to make sure those are priority projects as we go into the next fall. But what do y'all think?
I think that sounds good, but I still would like them to take a look at Casa Way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we haven't really looked at any location in the city at all for speed calming, other than College, nothing.
Okay, so Council, Councilman Perkins.
As we're looking at approving this for...
Now.
For now.
Right.
And then in terms of traffic calming and things like that, we've been pushing that.
Future.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, I would like, I would like to see some options. I think my only hesitation with jumping on the speed tables is we're spending a lot of money, and so if it's something where we can make it a little bit safer for pedestrians or, you know, to, you know, make it more aesthetic, especially for that, you know, that area as well, it's passed through, you know, I think the Indian Creek area is going to be redeveloped here pretty soon as well. You know, I think if we can take a little bit more time and do it right, that would be my preference.
Because, you know, the, the best solution from a cost standpoint is to do all the components at the same time, raise the curb, resurfacing, speed table, or speed dump.
Yeah, we've also had, and I don't think this is included on our list, but we also had a lot of complaints on, I believe it's Smith Street. People are using that kind of as a, to avoid the light in terms of traffic calming, so we can include that just as we explore things, you know, to your point on grouping projects together, I think that'd be good as well. Thank you.
All right. Yes.
Larry, I know we've had some concerns on College Street. And typically, when a neighborhood wants speed tables, isn't there the process where they get 51% of the homeowners to agree and that sort of thing? But in this case, it's something, I guess, that the city is planning to do versus requests from the citizens. But nonetheless, do we have a way to ask citizens on that street what they would prefer rather than us deciding that there should be to, you see what I'm saying? That it may not be an issue for everybody, and there, there may be different views.
Couple of years ago, well, actually back in 2000, I think, we all talked about having a policy for traffic calming. We never, we don't have one. And all the ones that we've ever installed on East Avenue, Popular, Rogers, those streets, and Mel, those concerns or those projects came about because the citizens on those roads came to council, a number of them. And so I would say a majority, but you had enough outcry saying, please calm traffic down. And so you can either take that approach and we can go out and ask people, there's no, no problem with that. I would not go through the arborist method of, of a policy because the city does not really have a lot of roads left to do this to. And it just, I think it's monies that really are not worth spending, to be honest with you. Let it come to council from citizens and then you make a decision upon, upon that. That'd be my recommendation.
Okay.
Right, but those citizens who don't know anything about it, that it's being proposed or anything like that, they wake up one morning, there's all this construction, there's speed tables, blah, 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 they know nothing about it. So how do we deal with that situation when some people have come to council, but the rest of the people on the street know nothing about it and haven't had a chance to, oh, kind?
So Popular and East Avenue, we did. We did, and actually Rogers, we did towards the end. So Popular and East Avenue, we actually, I developed a two or three paragraph, real simple, a picture, and said, what do you think about this? And then we got responses back because of that. So we'll do the same thing on College.
Right, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Bell?
And the only thing I'll say, Councilman, I think that's right, that the residents, they can tell us what they want. We're thinking about long-term impact on those roads and what does it shift and move and its most cost effect from our perspective. And I'm thinking about the granite resetting, and then I want to make sure that whatever we use does not cause that to dip back in, because if so, it's going to continue to flood in those neighbors' yards, which we continue to get the complaint. And then, well, something else you said, I can't think of.
So let me respond to that. Every granite curb that we've ever installed our last 13 years has concrete under them, so they'll never move again in our lifetime and beyond our lifetime. No movement. That's, that's one of the reasons they're there.
That's right, we go back and gather.
We actually done that.
Okay, there you go. All right. Any other comments from the council? Okay, all right, so you're going to go back and look at some of those projects?
Pre-roads.
Look at the streets and then, okay, perfect.
And if you need some, if you need any kind of narrative on Jamison for your conversation with Commissioner Bradshaw, I can provide that as well.
Okay, okay, perfect. Okay, so for next week, what do you need from us?
I can have those roads presented to you along with a narrative before your council meeting.
Okay, all right, excellent. And are there any other questions from the council at this time? Hearing none, are there any comments from the public on these, on this particular agenda item?
No one has signed up.
Okay, anyone in the audience, just to make sure. Okay, hearing none, this will be on the agenda for regular discussion with the updates that we will receive from Mr. Kaiser. So with that, that ends all of our old business and we will move into new business, starting with 6A, which is to discuss a change of ownership alcohol license application for Mancy 7311 LLC DBA Lulule package located at 3900 East Ponce de Leon Avenue, Clarkston, Georgia 30021. Ms. Mitchell.
The Alcohol Review Committee has received and reviewed an ownership change application for alcohol beverage package store for beer, wine, malt beverages, and distilled spirits. The location to be considered for this alcohol beverage license is Mancy 7311 LLC DBA Lulu's Package Store located at 3900 East Ponce de Leon Avenue, Clarkston, Georgia 30021. The Alcohol Review Committee shall consist of, or consists of, the Chief of Police, the Quality of Life Officer, which is also known as our Code Enforcement Officer, the City Clerk, and the Planning and Zoning Director. The Alcohol Review Committee reviews new licenses, renewals, and makes administrative recommendations to the mayor and council. The mayor and council shall make all final decisions regarding alcohol beverage licenses. The committee met, all of the required inspections and all the required background check has been passed, and the local, the location complies with the proximity requirements. However, the city code has not allowed new licenses for the package sale of alcohol since July 3, 2016, with the exception of certain specialty uses, growler shops, specialty wine shops, and grocery stores, excuse me, also retail delivery shops. City Code Section 3-54 allowed existing, AKA grandfathered, package, package stores to transfer their license to a new owner prior to January 1, 2023. This ability to transfer such license to a new owner expired 20 months ago. Under Section 3-54, the application will be considered denied. Again, I do state that the city council and the mayor do have the final decision on this application.
Okay, and I'd like Mr. Quinn to go over that so that for everyone in background, they have an understanding.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm happy to do so. Ms. Mitchell read accurately what the code says. The background is that in 2016, the city council made a policy decision, which was that it no longer wanted to allow package stores. And then that was balanced out by wanting to respect the investment of existing businesses in that area. And so the compromise, if you will, or the action that the council took was for the code to not allow new package stores, but to allow the existing package stores to remain indefinitely. The issue of transferring a license to a new owner at the same location was deliberated at the time. Different council members had different perspectives on whether that should be allowed or for how long that should be allowed. And the ultimate decision, it seemed like a long time off at the time, was January 1, 2023 would be the deadline for those transfers. And the only change that's been made to that code since is adding the delivery option to the, we went from three to four kinds of licenses that can be obtained new. That doesn't really apply here because this is, I mean, it doesn't apply at all because we're talking about a, not a delivery, but a purchase the beer, wine, or liquor from the store.
Johnson?
My question is for you, Mr. Quinn. At the time of deliberation, did we say how many times a business could transfer those, that ownership or that license?
I don't remember that being specifically addressed.
I thought it was two, at least two transfers, two or three transfers.
You mean a maximum?
Yeah, maximum. Just...
Well, if that was discussed, it may have been, that did not make it into the final adopted ordinance, like, what I can say for sure at this point.
But as of today, has expired. So, so for Ms. Mitchell in terms of city clerk, you denied this, is that, or is it?
Well, it's, sorry, go ahead. I think she's recommending denial based on the ordinance.
Okay.
But the way the code is set up is, and, and this is the way they all are in Georgia and the way it should be, this is an area where the state law gives the city council some discretion. And that's why this is a city council decision, because in my opinion, this case is very clear. It's, you know, we all agree that it's 20 months on from January 1, 2023. But other issues that come up with alcohol licensing is like the good character of the applicant, that can be a lot more discretionary decision. So there needs to be a vote by the city council at the regular meeting that results in a letter going to the applicant. If, if the vote is to deny, then they will get that letter and they'll have a chance to appeal that decision if they want. Of course, the code is, is pretty clear, and we don't have to allow package stores, of course.
Okay, council at this time, do you have any comments? Councilwoman Bell?
So I guess this question is for Tamika. So I don't see it on the application, the one attached to the packet, but was there a rationale for the transfer, like some undue burden or hardship that the applicant mentioned or?
No, the owners are here to speak on that.
Okay, we, if you don't mind, we'd like for you to come up so we have a understanding and state your name.
Good evening all, my name is Mansi Patel, and I'm the new applicant of that store, Lulu's Package Store.
So, so tell us what made you decide to come and, and you, you're buying the store, you just bought the store?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we were looking to buy new business in this area, and this was the good opportunity for us, and everything worked out in terms of loan and financing, so we tried, like, we decided to go for it.
Okay, all right, well, thank you for looking at Clarkston. So you are a new owner, and we're just looking in terms of transferring from the previous owner to you.
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
Any questions from the council? Okay, any questions from the council?
No, he's not here.
He's not here. Any other questions from the council? Councilwoman Perkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so I do have a question. So if we were saying that no more transfer's ownership would be allowed as of January twenty twenty-three, the receipt and checks I'm looking at are for July of twenty twenty-four. So it looks like we cashed a check for an application that presumably would have been denied at the outset. Am I reading that wrong?
Ms. Mitchell?
So again, um, the Alcohol Review Committee just recommends to council, uh, mayor and council based on the code. And so, um, if we denied receiving their funds for the application, we would definitely be denying their application, which staff has no authority to do.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, uh, any other questions?
And so was it communicated with the applicant that there was the potential or basically the details of the law that we have on the books in the application? Or in the process? No, okay, thank you.
So Ms. Mitchell, as far, as far as the process, when, when you receive an application, especially now, cause we only have so many package stores, is part of the process documented that as of January first, twenty twenty-three, this is the decision?
I don't see it documented. This application was received, I was not in office at the time.
Okay.
I was gonna leave.
You're gonna leave, okay. Okay, Councilwoman Bill?
Well, I do have just one question for you. Um, when did you take full ownership? Do you have a date that you took full ownership of the new package store?
I mean, uh, yes, we completed the closing in November. Sorry, December twenty twenty-three.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilwoman Hood?
Yes, um, did the seller indicate to you that there were prohibitions on the transfer of an alcohol license?
No, ma'am, it was not, yeah.
Okay, it's not. So, so again, going forward, Mr. Quinn. Thank you, unless council, do you have any other questions for, okay, you, you may be seated at this time, thank you. Mr. Quinn, for action upon the council, what is the action that we need to, to address for next week's meeting?
I think the action is to either approve or deny this application. Those are your options. I believe that it is not appropriate to approve an application that clearly does not comply with an existing ordinance. So, a- and to do so would be a constitutional rights problem generally, right? I mean, that would be an equal protection each issue, a due process issue. At that point, we're not deciding based on the established criteria, but based on, um, some other factor. So the way I see it, the choices would be to either repeal or modify the existing ordinance, or to deny the application.
And if we deny the application, then what would be the step for the owner at that point?
Uh, they would have an opportunity to appeal. And I don't have that in front of me, but I believe that that appeal would go to the DeKalb County Superior Court. However, I would not expect that appeal to prevail based on the code that we have.
Okay, so in essence, if it's something that we wanted to do in terms of moving forward with it for next council meeting, either we have to defer this and then do the repeal of the existing ordinance?
Right.
So that we, if this is something in terms of approving it and it's the pleasure of the body to approve, we first need to repeal what's the existing code. Is that correct?
Exactly right.
Okay.
And I would suggest if that is the direction that interests the council, that we communicate to the applicant in writing and have them communicate back in writing stating that they agree to, um, postpone the decision on their application.
Okay, and you, you're hearing us trying to work through some of this. Is it, you know, probably be another month before we get this through? Is that something in terms of us moving forward, would that be something okay in terms of? Okay, you don't have to. Yep, so, okay. So with that, council, are there any other questions with it?
I have a question for Mr. Quinn.
Yes?
So, Mr. Quinn, since the repealing this is not on the agenda, do we address that next week, or do we address the issue at hand?
Uh, I think we should, by addressing in terms of taking a vote, I would say no unless you're all ready to say what you want the rules to be right now and have me come back with the ordinance next week. The mayor's shaking her head no. And so I think that the decision next week would be, um, approve, deny, or defer. And for, I, I mentioned for defer that we would want to ask the applicant and get their consent to defer. And then this could be queued up for the next cycle where there would be an ordinance amendment followed by a vote on this application.
Okay, all right. So just so you know for clarity, we have your application, all right? But there's an existing ordinance that says as of January twenty twenty-three, no more transfers. So in order for us, in good faith, if we wanted to approve it, we have to address that ordinance first. Then once we address the ordinance, then we can address your appli- application.
I just want to request and clarify that, uh, the state have advised her to get the city license first and then we will have to reapply the state license and that will expire in December. So, uh, I'm not sure if the.
It won't, it won't, we won't be that long. It, it's not gonna be that long.
Okay.
Yes, Councilwoman Bill?
Thank you. So I have a question for Stephen. Is there a workaround around this? Is there a way for us, you know who asked this question, Stephen? Other options. Is there a way to do the appeal for this in a, in a more concise timeframe? To move on it?
Yeah.
Or do we have to wait another, to move on the vote and then go back to the ordinance? And then make the appropriate amendment and come back to this the following month?
Well, we could.
Special meeting.
Yeah, there could be a special meeting in between. I mean, if, if the council knows what it wants to do, we could take both the actions at the next meeting. I mean, it would be really simple for me to prepare the ordinance, but that would be kinda rushed in terms of setting your policy. I mean.
And it's not on the agenda, so that's the other piece.
That's true, and I think that would be sort of, uh, sneaking up on members of the community. I, I agree.
So, if I may, so I think that we should definitely have a special call. Based off the information that I received today, she has no knowledge about any of the ordinance that we have on the books. And the fact of the matter is, she bought this establishment with the hope that she could transfer. And I get that we don't have it on the books, but beyond the stuff that I don't know about this applicant based off what I read that would make her a poor applicant to not receive a license for, I just think that there, we've worked around before. And if we had a special call, we could have it in a time where we could make the public aware to move on if we decided to, to move on action. I don't know why we would delay a whole another month. That's what I'm asking.
I don't think we're saying that. So for the purposes of what's on the agenda, we can say that we can address what's on the agenda and if we have to have a special call meeting to make sure that everyone knows in advance, especially cause this is a big change. I remember this was a big deal when it even came up the first time. So just to make sure that everyone from the public has an opportunity, um, to, to have that.
Right.
And it's, and we're only talking a couple, if we did a special call meeting, a couple of weeks or whatever to do that.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Yes, why say?
So, we have a law that just expired January of twenty twenty-one. And, um, we have an applicant, I, I thank you for purchasing. However, if we change the law for everybody, because ignorance is not, you know what I'm saying? Just because you don't know doesn't change our laws. So we gotta have a more definite reason for changing, opposed to, I do apologize, an applicant making a purchase. I mean, we, we gotta stand on good government somewhere. So we gotta have a reason. Other than somebody applying, we gotta have a reason.
Okay.
If I must.
Yes.
Okay, so then we have to go back to why we actually put and changed it originally and saw how that was a harm to the communities around it. Which we haven't addressed that, and my problem is that this individual came and did an application and nobody made her aware of it at that point. I don't care who was up there.
Yeah, I started my application from December and I was not made aware about anything, so.
Yeah, I would just say, um, very briefly, I'm not making any, uh, expressing an opinion as to what's the right policy. The policy that was expressed in twenty sixteen, when the ordinance was adopted, was to one by one eliminate package stores from the city as the owners went out of business for any reason.
They go out of business.
Now, this is a new council and you can have a new policy.
Right.
They go out of business.
So what's on the agenda right now is for us to deal with the appli- application. And so, um, from a council perspective, do you want the city man, I mean, the attorney? I don't necessarily want you to rush to do it, because we do have the option to make sure in terms of putting the document together and taking the time to have that discussion.
Yeah, I think the discussion is the key rather than the drafting. I mean, the way I see it, you could keep it the way it is. You could say that they can be transferred at the same location at any time. Or you could set a new date in the future. I think those are the three options.
And we're gonna stop on that, because to that point, it is not on the agenda. And the only thing that's on the agenda is this application and how we have to deal with it. So as a result of it, council, do you, would you like for the city attorney to look at how we deal with the existing ordinance so that we will be prepared to address it?
Our council meeting or at the next work session?
That's the question. Do you want it at the next work session? Cause it's not on the agenda.
Yes, I, I think at the next work session that would give him adequate time. But I also want us to discuss how we inform. I realize that people should know what the laws are. But in reality, we need, I think we need to identify these places and let them know, uh, by certified letter or whatever, that this is a law and they should, uh, you know, proceed accordingly, so that we do not get in a situation where someone, I mean, this is not like a speeding ticket.
Right, this is a business. Pre-existing business.
Notifying probably already know, and they're not the ones that need to know. It's the next buyer.
But we would at least have confirmation that then the issue is between the new buyer and.
Yeah, it would be very helpful to the buyer that got turned away in a, in a civil case against the seller.
Right.
And then we would be out of it, because we would, it would, the, the burden would be on the current operator to disclose that to anybody purchasing it.
I think that's actually a really good idea and I think we would wanna wait until the decision about what, if anything, is gonna change and then send them out.
Okay, um, city manager, you wanted to make a comment?
Yeah, we, I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware that a part of our checklist that goes out to the applicant, uh, bullet number two says, "Read and understand the city's alcohol beverage ordinance, chapter three of the Code of Ordinances."
It's hard to articulate. Okay, so council, for this next meeting?
I mean, so you told me that you need a state license by December, correct?
Yes.
That gives us ample time for Stephen to go do the research and advise us how we, what are our options? Scenario A and B, and then for us to make the final decision.
So for next meeting, it sounds like both, we have two agenda items that we would need.
No, we don't. We just have one, the one on there. Right? I thought that's what we just said.
No, but we have two federal licenses, right?
Right.
Yeah, so we'll have to address those two for next one. But then within that time, when we have our next meeting, you will address the actual ordinance. That's the focal point of all of this.
Sure.
Okay, all right. So that will give you enough time, because that will be our Sep- uh, September work session, October council meeting, and you'll have enough time to address it then.
Okay.
Okay? It's a pause, not a period, okay? Thank you. So are there any other comments on this particular item?
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Yes, uh, my name is Vernice Smiley and I'm assisting them, I'm their business consultant, obtaining their business, their occupation type certificate and their alcohol previous license. I read the ordinance, it's hard, was hard to articulate, but I read the ordinance. This is a pre-existing business. So I'm just wondering why it cannot be, even though the ordinance was set for the twenty, for twenty twenty-three, if it's a pre-existing business and it has not, uh, closed down, the owner has not closed the business, it's a change of ownership. No interior or exterior work was done. So why can't this business be grandfathered in? In a pre-existing business that's been operating within a municipality for years, the license was denied, but they've been operating for a long time. So I would have made the assumption that based on other municipalities, that this would have been grandfathered in and this would not have been a discussion where the alcohol application was denied, especially after someone has spent hundreds of thousands of dollars and based on your ordinance, it does not mention that. So your order has, you have to be able to articulate in your ordinance, you know, what's the transfer? You're talking about transfer of business or transfer of alcohol previous, previous license? According to the state, the alcohol previous license cannot be transferred anyway. So exactly what are you talking about? The business or the alcohol license, transfer business owner or transfer of the alcohol previous license?
We're talking about the alcohol license.
Okay, so according to the state, the alcohol previous license cannot be transferred. DeKalb County, I used to work for DeKalb County Business License Division, and that their license is non-transferable. So the business owner know right then and there that the alcohol license cannot be transferred. So, so the ordinance has to articulate, is it talking about the business, the alcohol license, or the transfer of business? If the transfer of business, again, is a pre-existing business, so Clarkson, City of Clarkson will shut down and deny an alcohol license for a pre-existing business?
Respectfully, ma'am, that's not exactly what's happening. I mean, it, it says in the code section that, that these grandfathered licenses can be renewed, but after January first, twenty twenty-three, grandfathered licenses to sell alcohol by the package may not be transferred to another licensee. And the state license and the, you need a city license to get a state license.
Of course you do.
But those are two separate things.
Oh, I understand that, of course you need a city license, that's the state law, you need a city license first. And once you get the city license, you take the city license place on a state license off in the porter, and then the state will go to the porter and retrieve the alcohol previous license. So I understand that, but this is a pre-existing business. So why can't, I mean, even though you say the grandfather status, you know, ended, I don't understand why they have to.
So we're gonna have Ms. Cameron come up. And that's our planning director.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. The city attorney and I have not, um, have not spoken on this and, and rightfully so. I would tell you that in most municipalities, existing businesses do, um, within a certain period of time. And as I was having a conversation with the city clerk, um, I think I understood that we were talking about, um, the, the, the package stores is what I understood tonight. But, but. But, but I, and I have to tell you that when I did the zoning, when I actually did the application, because you just had a rewrite, I, it no longer was optimal in that or permitted use in that zoning ordinance. But I was told that it was already an existing package store. And as the planners know, if you are operating and it's a change of ownership and that use is still the same, if it hasn't shut down in six months, then it's still permitted. And, you know, I'm trying to understand, are we talking about transferring ownership or transferring alcohol license? Because you can't do that. And you can't do that in the state. You can't do that in the city. The city shut that down. But we have, in our rewrite, we have our grandfather, you know, our legal non-conforming section of the code that talks about use. So I would just recommend, I would like to, I would just like for the city attorney to look at that because, you know, when we look at our existing businesses and you or, these people are not transferring a license. They're, it's just ownership. It's, you know, we, if we're gonna, if we don't, if we're gonna stop that, we need to put that information on our application and not just quote the section of the code. I mean, we worked in places where we actually put the code so that people can see that when they get that application. That's the first thing they see. And so I agree that we do have a lot of work that we have to do to communicate better. We want to be known as a user-friendly, you know, community. And so with that being said, I, you know, I would definitely say that I apologize for number one because when I saw the application, I thought it was a new application until I was told that it was an existing business and it was just a change of ownership. And we've been doing that, and as you look at your second application, it's gonna be similar. Not quite in this fashion, but it's gonna be similar. So I would say that if we were to do an analysis, a comparable analysis with our, with other municipalities, you will, you will see that. But again, I don't know the history here and I don't know why we, you know, why, why it's worded that way. But I'm learning. I'm not making assumptions. I'm learning. But in all due respect, I did want to just say that because it was, it's been a conversation that we've had in the office.
Okay, well, thank you for enlightening us. So for this agenda, it sounds like we're gonna defer this. And then we'll have staff to work on the actual ordinance itself and look at the ordinance so that we'll have something ready for the September work session, October meeting. And that gives you time to work on that. So we'll address in terms of deferring it for next week, in terms of what's on the agenda. And then have you to do the due diligence because based on even this conversation, it looks like it's a little more work than having it ready by next week.
Sure.
Okay, sure. Okay, anything else? All right, so we'll have to more than likely defer this till the next council meeting. But just want to make sure, again, pause, not period, okay? Okay, all right. Any other comments from the public? None? Okay, so then we'll move on to the next item, which is six B, to discuss a change of ownership alcohol license application for Yetaya Enterprise LLC, DBA Ponce Cafe located at thirty-six fifty-two Market Street, Suite Two, Clarkston, Georgia, three zero zero two one. And Ms. Tamika, Ms. Tamika.
All right, so similar to the previous application, the Alcohol Review Committee did determine all required inspections have been performed and the required background checks have been passed. The Code Compliance Division measured the locations and found that the proximity measurements with regards to school, churches, libraries, parks and adult entertainments are met at this location. However, under the same code and section, it's up to the mayor and council's discretion for approval.
Okay.
Because this is...
Okay.
This is a restaurant.
This is a restaurant.
It's beer, wine, malt beverages and distilled, excuse me, and it's a restaurant.
Okay. Okay, so for everyone, Mr. Quinn, can you just make sure in terms of, one was a package store, the original one, and this one is a restaurant? And so from us as a body addressing this, what is our action in terms of that?
Sure, well, in this case, the prohibition on new licenses and what is, I can only say it by going back to the last one, right? So the last one, we had an application for a new package sales license, which are not allowed. And then there was a temporary exemption to that for getting a new license at a location that already had one up till twenty twenty-three. None of that applies because we are talking about a license for consumption on the premises, which is only allowed in Clarkson at restaurants. And the twenty sixteen city council did not act to restrict those in the same way. And so you're free to approve or deny the application based on its merits, which the city clerk expressed to be worthy.
Okay, and do we have the applicant?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor and member of city council. This is a gentleman that he just purchased a business. I am his consultant by profession. I'm an accountant in city of Clarkston. And I was just understanding the situation. This gentleman was talking. I can share that too because I have so many clients. They've been going through that. So I would appreciate the city council if you could look at it and put clear, clear black and white policies so that way we can understand it, you know, and then there wouldn't be no problem, nobody whining and crying, especially when you invest a lot of money. So I will take any question from city council and mayor.
No, we're just happy for the new owner and glad you're on Market Street. So glad to see you there. Any questions from the council? None? Okay, I think you can take a seat now.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So again, this is a little different situation. This is a restaurant, and so with a restaurant, that's the consumption on premise. All right, if there are no other questions on this one, is there any questions from the public? So do you want this as a consent to move forward with it or you want more discussion for the council meeting? Consent to approve? Well, you got it. You have to... Is it okay for the council to approve on this one? No consent? Okay, okay, no consent? All right, so this is a regular agenda item. All right, and we'll move on to the next one, which is to discuss continuation of the audiovisual services by Icon Film Works until October first, twenty twenty-four for the city council work session, council meetings and special call meetings in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand to be funded out of professional services. Interim City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. As you are aware, we are currently using Icon Film Works to do our audiovisual services for city council work sessions, our council meetings, special call meetings. And at the beginning of this year, the council approved the services of Icon Film Works to go from January until August first. Knowing that that August first deadline was approaching, after our procurement consultant started with the city, he began to put together a request for proposal package that was posted in mid-July. It was posted to the Georgia Procurement Registry. It was posted on BidNet and also on the city's website. That particular RFP closed on July thirtieth, and we only received two bids. So, you know, I was a little curious in talking with our procurement consultant because surely with a RFP, you know, like that, we were expecting to get more. Well, I asked him to look into, you know, making sure that everything was done properly. And he subsequently discovered that the Georgia Procurement Registry failed to go live with our audiovisual services solicitation on their website. Therefore, a number of potential bidders did not get the bid when it was posted at that time. And that was beyond our control. So as the city manager, I rejected the two bids that were received and we re-advertised the bid. The bid was reopened on August the eighth. It will close on September the fourth. A mandatory pre-bid meeting was held on Thursday, August the twenty-second, where we did have, from my understanding from staff, about twenty bidders that attended. And therefore, it is our expectation to review those bids when they come in and to award or make a recommendation that the council award that bid to the most responsive and responsible bidder. I will say that it is staff's recommendation that we continue with Icon based upon the current timeline that I just expressed to you. And continuation of that service with Icon is not to be considered a relationship with the current bid solicitation process. So with that said, it's staff recommendation that based upon the current bid that's out, time for staff to do the analysis and provide a recommendation at the September twenty-fourth work session. And of course, you know, and council's decision to take it forth to be on the August first, October first, pardon me, city council meeting. And that's staff recommendation.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions from the council on this item?
A couple of questions.
Yes, Councilwoman Hood.
It says here that they are providing audiovisual services for city work sessions, regular meetings.
And can you come closer to the microphone?
I'm sorry, I'm not near the microphone. Are, is Icon doing court services?
No, ma'am.
And how is the AV being done for court services?
Court doesn't have videoing. Court has audio. And they do recording through their laptop, through the recording services of BLS Digital, which is the current, what is it? BIS Digital.
BIS.
BIS Digital.
Okay, and we have that equipment here.
Yes, ma'am, it's right behind us.
Now, I know that this has been a long discussion, but have we ever gotten to the bottom of whether the BIS equipment can be functional for our uses?
So Councilwoman Hood, I'm on, we're gonna stay on track with this one.
Okay.
This is not the agenda item to that discussion.
I will have that discussion with the city manager at another time.
Okay, thank you. All right, are there any other comments on this one? Yes?
I have a question. So just on the, on the issue of it not being posted, do we have a current contract? Am I remembering incorrectly that we have a contract with the bid platform?
Are you talking about BidNet?
BidNet.
Yes, we do. You guys approved that a couple of weeks ago.
That's what I thought. And so is there, can you unpack a little bit more the reason that it wasn't posted? Was it an error on their part?
No, it's not BidNet. It was the state.
State.
State of Georgia.
State procurement, okay, gotcha.
And I don't have any explanation other than they did not do it. They acknowledged that they made a mistake on their part. I don't know why it happened, but they acknowledged that it did not go live.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, any other comments at this time? Okay, hearing none. Is there anyone from the public on this particular item? Okay, and counsel, how would you like to address this as consent? Or do you want this as an agenda item?
So I do have one question.
Sure.
So this is just a matter of process. So the bid reopened on August eighth, and it's scheduled to have the mandatory pre-meet on August twenty-second, where the vendors will attend, but then we only, based off how this is written, the continuation of the contract ends on October first.
Yes, for, well, it would end on October first. Yes, ma'am.
But, but do you see what I'm getting to? August eighth is when it reopen. August twenty-second is the meeting. So you only have one month in between that. Is that gonna be enough time for you to have the meetings with them that they attend on August twenty-second with one month term for the continuation of their contract until October first?
Let me make sure I got it right. We reopened the bid on August the eighth.
Yep.
It will close on September fourth. Go to the third paragraph of the...
But you're gonna have the pre-meet in on August twenty-second?
Yes, that has passed.
Oh, I'm sorry. I see.
Yes, and I, yes, August twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
We don't need that.
She was just going through the flow process. There you go.
All right, sorry about that. We don't need it.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
But my question's still staying.
Is that enough time?
Is that enough time? If it closed on September fourth and we only continue that contract, oh, sorry. If it closed on September fourth and we continue that contract to October first, is that enough time for you to go through the application? Is that enough time to start another contract because that ends on October first? Does that make sense?
Yes, so October first would be the last day that Icon Film Works would do service for us if they're not the bidder that's not selected. So, and that would be the last council meeting expected for the month of October. So unless there are some special call meetings that are in between there, the next council meeting wouldn't be until the work session on October twenty-ninth. So that would give us about three or four weeks for us to hopefully transition to the new company if that happens. I may have to come back to you and, but I don't, I won't know until we pretty much kind of get to the process of seeing who we're gonna be selecting.
So to follow up, by September twentieth, you're going to have the company identified and ready for us to move forward?
Yes, for the work session, we'll be giving you a recommendation at the September twenty-fourth work session.
Okay. Okay, and yes?
So my thought process is this, and you know, I'm just gonna be mindful. We're strapped with capacity. This, the situation that has been brought before us could potentially happen as a scenario B that we don't want, but we have no control over state procurement. You only have about a little bit over thirty days to come back with identified vendors. But if you think that y'all are capable of doing it in that timeframe, I just want to open that up.
Well, I certainly would, would be, it would help, be helpful to staff if you were to give us some cushion time, you know, in case we have to make some type of changes. But again, we don't have a crystal ball. We don't necessarily know. But if we want to maybe extend that out another two weeks, another month, we would certainly be okay with that if that is the council's desire as far as assisting staff.
Councilwoman Hood.
I think that's a good idea because we never know when we're going to do a special call meeting.
That is true.
And so if there's some way that it could be definitely extended for a month and then add our option for them to continue for an additional three weeks or two weeks or whatever.
Okay.
So that we're not committing beyond that. But we do have a plan so that we don't end up with having a special call meeting that isn't covered.
Okay, so what about November the first? But we can still keep, I would still recommend an amount not to exceed be included.
Okay.
Because this amount is based upon the monthly fee that we're paying for their services.
Okay, so if we extended it to November, what would that do in terms of not to exceed amount?
Which would be, I would say thirty thousand. Because that's about, I believe about forty-five hundred dollars a month.
Okay, so thirty thousand.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, not to exceed till November.
November 1st.
Councilwoman Perkins.
Ms. Adler Jones already answered my question. I guess in terms of its impact on the broader budget, because one of the things we've discussed is do we need to purchase our own equipment at some point, transition to more of just a management versus bringing everything in and setting it up? How would that impact the budget?
Um...
Or do you need time to?
Yeah, we, we need some time to take a look at that, but that's something that we do desire. You know, I wanna say that Icon has done an excellent job for us. You know, they've helped us out. And some things, you know, we have talked to Mr. Hammond about if we were to purchase our own televisions, particularly as we get ready to go into the new location, we may wanna just have some permanently fixed TV monitors that all they have to do is maybe plug in the wires and that will save us some money rather than having to rent the TVs that we're having to do every month.
Gotcha. I got a follow-up, um, as a recommendation. So I don't know if this, I'm assuming this would be possible by next Tuesday, but my recommendation that we set ourselves up with options for this, especially in terms of the month, you know, budget increases, having any of the numbers worked out between now and Tuesday, Ms. Adler Jones. And then I would recommend that we maybe put some language in whatever we end up passing, you know, up to X amount for the actual budget, but then up to a certain amount for the months as well so that in the case the state, you know, just really watched the Olympics and gets inspired, you know, sets a world record and comes back, you know, we can also make that decision sooner if need be.
Okay. So you have that? Any other questions? Councilwoman Bell?
I got one last statement. So I have a recommendation. I want y'all to all lean in on this one. So we've been discussing this audio and visual situation for a while, to Susan Hood's point, right? We have the equipment here. We've been having to have a consultant. We wanna make sure that our residents can hear and see what we discussing. While I wanna give the city enough time to identify the appropriate vendor, I also would love to know the recommendation internally of how we're going to use the equipment that we already have as we start in fiscal year '25. Because, I mean, the budget and this is getting cost, it's costing us more. We already have the equipment, so is it a internal training thing that we need to figure out? Who owns it, how we get access to it? But we, we've been holding it over a year, y'all. So I would like to, yes, give you enough time to get the appropriate vendor and give us the RFPs and review those, but also come up with the strategic recommendation on how we move forward with the equipment that we have to start using it in the beginning of next year.
So as part of that, you have that with the transition in terms of the new building, is that correct?
Yes, that is our desire to take what we have because the city did spend a significant amount of money purchasing it. Now, I can't believe, begin to explain why this particular company was chosen. I'm not at that level of expertise. However, it is our desire to take what we have over to the new building and then again, hopefully be able to purchase some items and not have to spend as much towards monthly service, you know, for having somebody do the streaming portion for us. But, you know, just paying for the labor and not for like the equipment.
Any other questions?
I have a question that I wanna say. So I don't wanna pay for the labor either. I want that to be a staff responsibility internally because that's how it was before. We didn't pay additional consultant to help us with it. It was one staffer that was responsible for. So when I say like the recommendation on how we use the equipment is who will have full ownership of it too and like is responsible for the tech support, whatever it means. It can be multiple, it can be cross-teens. I just wanna make sure that we use what we have and somebody internally knows how to use it.
Well, I would like to say, based upon my experience of being here, we only had initially one camera in the back of the room that was operated by a one of some, some sort. But if that is what you guys want to go back to, we did not have the multiple camera changes. So I guess I would, you know, we can come back with some recommendations to you, but I guess I would like to also get some direction from the council. How fancy do you wanna be? You didn't have the names on the screen when you were speaking. You didn't have the double screens when somebody was on Zoom. Those are all things that are being provided to us by a professional company that focuses on audiovisual services. Now, I mean, I've worked other places where we had a part-time person that came in and ran the audio. It was a full, you know, equipment that was set up in a room in the council chambers, and that's all that person did. However, we did have to invest in multiple cameras to, you know, bring it up to the level, you know, that we thought it should be at as far as, you know, internally and our citizens who were viewing the meetings virtually.
Yes, Councilwoman Hood.
And I think all of that needs to go into a mix to show the best approach and including the cost. Because the cost now, this is all very nice, but it's very high.
Yes, and...
And so I...
But I won't be able to have it by, in seven days, so.
No, I think, uh, right. Councilwoman Bell was saying by the first of the year.
Yes, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that, we'll use that as a part of our budget preparation process. And as you men, as we mentioned, you know, we'll have the RFPs and be able to provide that information to you.
I'm gonna let Vice, Vice Mayor say.
Okay.
Who, please?
My question is from Ms. Tammy. Have we reached out to VS Digital to see if there was any add-on services that could be attached to the system that we have? Because when we first got this system, they talked about we had, what we had was a bundled service. We only paid for a portion of it, and they had other attachments. So I don't know if they have the audiovisual, but that was something that was mentioned when we first got it that we didn't have all of the components of it. And how efficient are they when it comes to servicing it?
Not that good.
Well, we don't need nothing that we can't.
So...
If we, if they're not gonna service it, we don't need to try to perfect it.
So for...
Because we can't learn how to work on somebody else's machine.
Yes, but again...
So for this agenda item, what I'm hearing from the body is that you want to extend it to November 1st, not to exceed 30. I wanna make sure we stay on track with what's before us. Then for the additional information that we are asking of staff is that we, we need that clarity in terms of how much of this is gonna be in-house versus what we're outsourcing or in any of what we're outsourcing. So that financially, we understand, are we owning all of the equipment in terms of the TVs, everything else? Because that's important as you're looking at the bids from an expectation, if we're doing all the double screens, everything else, that's something as a council, we have to decide too, how, as you like to say, fancy, we wanna have it or we just wanna make sure in terms of live streaming, we just do the basics or whatever. But again, part of that too is from how we're gonna have that new area set up in terms of the number of TVs to be able to, to do presentations and making sure that not only we can see it as a council, but also the community can see it as well. So we need to make sure in terms of what we're getting back, that we're getting back what the overall cost will be to us. What's that difference in terms of that RFP from the expectation of outside sources versus what we're gonna do in-house and keep in-house? Okay, so, yes.
Sorry, can I ask one more? So this, this ties in with sort of that larger picture as well. One thing we didn't mention is metrics. And so I think when we're looking at expense and, you know, the question of how fancy do we wanna be? Do we have any viewership or like any kind of social media engagement metrics with our YouTube channel or people that are tuning in?
Are you asking that for...
Sorry, I'm asking, yeah, for tonight. Do we, do you know that off the top of your head or...
No, I don't, I mean, James, you guys... Okay, yeah, he can prepare that for us.
Yeah, exactly, I think that would sort of inform. You know, if we have two people tuning in every four months, then that I think kind of tells us either, hey, we need to ask the community, you know, and say, hey, is this something you want? You know, why aren't people engaging? Or that the community's already telling us, hey, you know, we're not opting in. I mean, I love hanging out with y'all. We may not be the most exciting bunch to tune into on a Tuesday night. And so I think that helps, will help inform, again, the budget side of things as well.
Right. Yeah, and that's a very valid point, thank you. Because if we're not having a lot of people tuning in and we're spending a lot of money, then it's, we're not being good stewards. So we just need to keep that in mind. Okay, with that, any other questions on this? So you have the update in terms of the change? Councilwoman Bell? Come on, there you go.
It's work. Okay, so the other thing is, as you're doing the bids, this is just for consideration. I think that the mayor and Councilman Perkins brought up a good point about the analytics, but I think also figuring out what potential video and audio will do, like the advertisement and the promotion piece. Because I, I think that the analysts can tell us who's viewing it, but that ain't the problem. That won't be like why they're not. It's the lack of outreach and promotion of we have this visual piece to our meeting or that we're having the meeting tonight that doesn't get people to tune in. So I think that's a component of the RFP as you draft the scope of work, trying to find also if that is one of the services that can be rendered. Does that make sense?
Yes, but the RFP is already out.
Yeah.
It's out now.
It's already out. So, but to your point, if we make sure, because I know it's been said a couple of times as far as communication and that wonderful newsletter that we've been talking about having forever to come back.
I think it came back. Yeah, I seen it.
We have a newsletter?
We, we use constant contact. We don't have a printed newsletter yet.
No, 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 not the print, I didn't, I didn't say printed.
But just remember, our communications person's only been here for 90 days. But she's gonna work on a...
She said that she had one last meeting. Remember somebody asked that question? She said, here it is. She showed it to Debbie on the phone in front of my desk. That's how I know we have one.
No, we don't, she hadn't done a newsletter, but she's...
All right.
So, so that, we can, you know, in terms of more communication and getting that out. So there you go. Okay, anything else? We got that for that item, so we're good. Any comments from the public? All right, hearing none. We'll then go to item 8D, or 6D, I'm sorry, to discuss appointing a member to fill a vacancy on the Clarkson Historic Preservation Commission. And Ms. Cameron?
She had to leave, Mayor.
Okay.
But she has provided you with the recommendation, so...
Okay.
Um, it would be up to the council. I believe there is a Robin Anderson Sands is the only one.
Okay, and this is the council's recommendation?
My question is, is this the only person that applied?
Because I thought it was two people.
Because last week it was two. I thought it was two.
Ms. Cameron had to leave, she had already told me. But this is the selection. Did she tell you it was two?
Last time I heard it was two.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, if she told you it was two, I would err on the side of caution and maybe just let her confirm that.
So we can make sure that this is a regular agenda item for next council meeting so that she can affirm that it is two people for us to select or not, or the person may withdraw their application.
But if this is her recommendation, we will respect that. So we don't have to, right. If this is their recommendation, I'm fine with it. I just ask a question.
It looked like it's her recommendation because it says recommendation to city appoint by vote. So I guess she looked at both applications and looked at the skill set. I don't know though, so.
What do you see as a recommendation?
It don't say no more than that.
Yeah, that's why I said, and she's not here to answer whether or not it was two.
Yeah, regular discussions.
So, yeah, you, you make that recommendation. So this is the appointment from the city council for this particular person. So if you're fine with moving forward with this one, we can move forward. You can have it as a regular agenda item.
Yep. I, I would like the issue of two applicants to be resolved. So if we could do that at a city council meeting and then we can take a vote, I would prefer that.
So just tell me how that works. And I guess this question is for Stephen. If we only have one in the packet right now, how would we then consider both of them without amending the agenda item? Because it's not on here for us to review and give them enough time to come and just make it aware for the public before we make the, the vote.
Right, so, I mean legally, the things you mentioned as far as the public's opportunity to engage are not required legally for this particular action. That doesn't mean that they are not worthy or shouldn't be done. So, I mean, to answer your question from a legal perspective, you can go ahead and appoint anyone who applied. If the council feels like the way it's come about isn't giving fair notice or an opportunity to participate, then you might not wanna act. Did that answer your question?
Yes, because my other question is for the, I mean, took consideration for the council to think through that if we gonna get the other applicant later on this week, we still haven't given that person enough time to come to us or for us to review and make their appropriate appointment unless we're gonna do both of them? I mean, that's just for consideration.
Added a question on that.
Yes. Councilman Perkins.
Ms. Adler Jones, do you know if we've, have, have the applicants been informed that they were coming up for discussion tonight? Have they been invited to the council meeting, our work session?
Mrs. Sands is on the Zoom, but I do not know whether any other applicants were invited.
Okay.
Okay, and who's on the...
Robert.
Who, who's?
Ms. Robbins.
Ms. Robbins.
Okay, Ms. Robbins Sands. Well, let's, since she took the time to come out, Ms. Sands, would you like to say a few words?
Um, hello, I'm here.
Okay.
I would have been there in person, but I have an active case of COVID.
Oh, will you stay where you are?
I am staying here.
So we're grateful. Just tell us a little bit about yourself and what made you so excited to be on our pres, on our Historic Preservation Committee?
I have been meaning to do this for quite some time. Due to my work obligations, the time constraints, I wasn't sure I could make the commitment. But I have been watching the postings, looking for people. And I have a shuffle in my projects and decided that this was a good time to go ahead and, and get involved. I grew up, I mentioned this when I spoke at a recent meeting, and I grew up near Historic Orange. This is a city in the center, in the middle of Orange County. And we were surrounded by historic buildings of all different kinds, different sizes, and all used for various purposes. And I, I find them fascinating.
Well, thank you for rearranging your schedule to help out that committee. So we definitely appreciate that. Any other comments, council? Okay? With that being said, your pleasure is? Regular agenda. She wants regular agendas. Okay, regular agenda, okay? With that, that's a regular agenda item. And so for those who are here, you heard us say some things were consent, some things were a regular agenda item. That means if it's a consent, when we get ready to do our agenda next week, we're gonna vote on all of those things that do not require additional deliberation.[1768.26]